I find it when I try to exceed the limit, I'm beating a parade. I like it.
Can I get one from my white card, too?
I'm waiting for the official clock. Our old time analog clocks in here kind of disagree, so I'm going off computer time. So we got another, less than a minute. There we go. We will call this meeting, this special meeting, special joint meeting of the Encinitas City Council and Mobility and Traffic Safety Commission order. And with that, we will do the roll call.
I'm going to start with the Commissioner Duncan.
Present.
Commissioner Gross is absent, I believe. Commissioner Medak?
Here.
Commissioner Templin?
Here.
Commissioner Teal is absent, I believe. And then Vice Chair Johnson?
Present.
And Chair Trope?
Present.
And then I want to move to City Council. Councilmember San Antonio?
Present.
Councilmember Shaker?
Here.
Councilmember O'Hara is running a little bit. We'll note when he arrives. Deputy Mayor Lyons?
Here.
And Mayor Ehlers?
Here.
Okay. On tonight's agenda, we have one item, and it's a joint meeting of the City Council and Mobility and Traffic Safety Commission to discuss the Mobility and Traffic Safety Commission work plan. And with that, I'll turn it over to Staff, Traffic Engineer Bandigan.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Councilmembers, members of public. A Bandigan City Traffic Engineer. We're here on our second joint meeting of the year between City Council and Mobility and Traffic Safety Commission, as Mayor mentioned, for reviewing our Mobility and Traffic Safety Commission's work plan. A very quick review of our Munich Code. Our Mobility and Traffic Safety Commission has seven members, one from Cardiff, one from Acadia, New Encinitas, Old Encinitas, Olivenheim, and two members are at large. We have also ex-official members, Fire Chief, Police Chief, which is our Sheriff's Traffic Sergeant, and the City Engineer. Mobility and Traffic Safety Commission has an advisory role and studies and reports to City Council upon matters referred by Council, also serves as a liaison between public and the City Council and to conduct and support staff to conduct analysis and provide recommendations to the City Council. Also, obviously, City Council may refer our requests and provide directions to MTSC for reviewing items and providing recommendations to Council. A little bit of background on the work plan and why we are here. The Commission was established in eighty-nine, nineteen eighty-nine. Their roles and duties were amended in two thousand and ten. It was renamed from a Traffic and Public Safety Commission to Mobility and Traffic Safety Commission in two thousand and twenty-one. There is no dedicated funding. There's no specific funding for Mobility and Traffic Safety Commission. There hasn't been, I guess. The goal of this work plan was to assure that MTSC's work and the projects that are reviewed and the projects that are initiated align with our Council's interests and goals. We put together, we, Staff and Commission worked together, prepared a work plan for Council in two thousand and twenty-four. Various projects were included. It was presented to Council last October. Council suggested a joint meeting be held. There was a joint meeting scheduled in March. Council provided direction to the Commission on how they'd like to see the new work plan. Commission met and discussed the new work plan three times after March, and a new work plan was drafted and prioritized by the Commissioners. The work plan has general tasks that will always be in our work plan, irrelevant of which year it is. Matters that are directly assigned to MTSC will always be on our work plan. Items that require Council approval, new stop signs, new speed surveys, new traffic signals, these will always be in the Commission's purview, where they will always review and provide recommendation. Our safe routes to school annually, we have multiple projects based on our school district liaison committee input, our communications with the schools based on our mobility manager's role communicating with this school district staff. We have annual striping modifications that happen around the city. These will always get reviewed by the Commission. And also, the individual requests that come from public to the Mobility and Traffic Safety Commission, those will always stay as a work plan item, even though we don't have a specific project name or title in the work plan, but these will always be in there. On top of these general topics, we have ten projects that our Commissioners, from a very, very long list of projects, they shortlisted this per Council's direction and voted on these projects that were of interest of our Commission. And with that, I'm going to pass it to our MTSC Chair Patricia Traus to go over the two slides that we have for those ten projects.
Thank you, Abe. Since I just became the Chair in April, I just wanted to give you a little more background about myself. I've been on the Commission since two thousand and twenty-one, reappointed in two thousand and twenty-four. I was elected to be Vice Chair, and then in April, I was elected to be the Chair. So, as Abe said, we're here to get feedback and to get approval of our work plan. You see it up on the screen, the various projects. I can go through them if you would like. Just spend about four or five minutes on the ten projects. The first one is implementing signage for all of our roundabouts. That would be citywide. You know, over the course of the years, the guidelines or the requirements changed a little bit, so we just want to make sure we're consistent with signage throughout the city. The second item is the Santa Fe, and we would be working with Staff and also a consultant to make recommendations on some enhancements that could be implemented. The third project is part of the circulation element, and we'll be looking at evaluating and prioritizing roadways to identify some active transportation routes. And this is, excuse me, particularly relevant around the schools. The fourth project is at Birmingham and Legay, on the north side of the walkway, the sidewalk. It just kind of ends because it's very steep, so just east of that, we want to put a crosswalk in there so that it's safe for pedestrians across the street. Number five is to work with the Sheriff's Department and also Staff to increase enforcement. Number six is to create some walkway continuity for Vulcan on the west side of the road. The walkway system is a little inconsistent. Number seven is for New Encinitas to look at more pedestrian-friendly improvements, such as mid-block crosswalks. Number eight is developing some recommendations or a policy for parking for bicycles in commercial areas. Number nine is a quick-build roundabout. Currently, we have stop signs in that area, and, you know, sometimes it starts to back up, so, you know, the roundabout would be a little bit more efficient for vehicles to get them through the space while still maintaining that safety for the pedestrian. And then lastly is safety education and working with our mobility manager to come up with recommendations on that. So with that, I'm going to turn it back to Abe.
No further comments on this presentation. Mayor, if you and councilmembers have questions or suggestions, we're open. Thank you.
Any preliminary questions? No? And how many speakers do we have?
Thirteen, two in time donations.
Okay. Let's go with the full three minutes, and then we'll have deliberation, so.
All right. I'll call you three at a time. First is Christine Schindler, followed by Doug Anderson, and then Aaron Hebshi.
And my only comment would be, because we only have an hour, the shorter you can keep it, the better, because we're trying to get some deliberation in here, too, so. And if people that are next up could come up to the front row, that would help reduce the time.
All right. So thank you for having this special meeting. My name's Christine Schindler. I live in East Encinitas. I'm actually going to read, so I don't normally do this. I believe in the goodness of people, but this belief is being challenged these days, so we need to slow the fast down, and we need more and better planning, like Vision Zero, engineering, like effective roadway design, traffic calming, technology, like red light cameras, enforcement to lower our speeds and to lower our speed limits as a city, which we're doing, and I appreciate that, community outreach that's meaningful, so a very good next public awareness campaign to get people to care more, and, as always, education for all our road users. I've, in the past, acknowledged what the city has done, and I just want us to lean in and do more. So I have, before I go to this, looking at those ten projects, two of them I circled because two of them were actively engaged in doing things, so I just want the Commission, I'll come to a Commission meeting and let them know, but that has to do with A-two routes, especially around schools and safety education. So I have a new team sport. It puts me in San Diego Bay often now. I love it, by the way. So Tuesday morning, I was doing a paddle, and I was blessed with an infrequent sighting. Two adults, sorry, am I going to get upset? Two adults and a young dolphin. My thoughts quickly went to John, Bridget, and Emery. Losing lives on our roadways is tragic and preventable, so whether we're young, old, black, white, brown, whether we're drivers, or bike riders, or pedestrians, we can prevent these things from happening. So I want to have a work plan for this Mobility and Traffic Commission, for what it's worth, that focuses on meaningful projects that truly, truly make a difference. So I look to our Council to continue the efforts and to our city staff to continue the efforts and our city manager, and I do appreciate what's been done to date, but things move forward very slowly, and we need to pick up the pace, so thank you very much.
My name's Doug Anderson. I'm a former healthcare provider and driving instructor with more than twelve years of experience as an educator and driving instructor for responding to emergencies, driving various vehicles from a car to a truck greater than thirty-two feet in length. To quote Linky from an article published in the San Diego Union Tribune, "I strongly believe that distracted driving or aggressive driving are bigger issues than speed alone." Clearly, there is a mentality among drivers of entitlement. Road rage and ignorance of abiding by rules of the road will only get worse unless the punishment is more severe and curbs the behavior. We currently see the disregard for rules of the road with e-bike gangs. These kids will soon be driving cars with the same learned behaviors driving an e-bike or motorized bicycle, which is none. The mentality of entitlement among drivers and operators of motorized bicycles is leading to an increase in road rage. To address e-bike safety, I propose to operate any e-bike or powered bicycle, that completion of a mandatory education of the rules of the road be required, like the California boater card. Any individual operating a powered bicycle should be required to complete an approved education safety course and carry the card when operating. To address pedestrian safety, I propose considering no turn-on-red citywide by making everyone stop all the time. You eliminate the potential pedestrian accidents and crosswalks at lights. I would also suggest that every left turn on green with oncoming traffic, where there is a traffic light and a pedestrian crossing, that it should also have a turn-on-green-only signal. And lastly, there needs to be stiffer penalties for infractions. Nobody other than a first responder is in a hurry. There's never a reason to disobey a stop sign or a stoplight. I propose violations by motorists, whether operating a car or a motorized bicycle that participate in traffic infractions of the above mentioned. Also, complete mandatory hours of approved courses with regards to rules of the road, and also perhaps hours in anger management or moral decision counseling, which would be paid for by the offenders. So in summary, I propose a mandatory motorized bicycle card, no turn-on-red, left turn-on-green arrow at intersections with traffic lights where there are pedestrian crossings, and mandatory classes for offenders.
Following Aaron will be Leslie Engel, Patty Hopkins, and then Josh Armstrong with two time donations, one from Bridget Chaliki and the other from Tricia Crawford.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers and Commissioners. My name is Aaron Hebshi. I live in Lucadia. I'm also a member of Encinitas Bike Walk, which is a local bicycle and pedestrian advocacy organization. We work with Staff and Commissioners on infrastructure design, education, and safe routes to school, et cetera, and you could see several of us up here frequently advocating for safe streets. I don't personally know Emery's family, but we are friends and neighbors of those who have danced with her. Our community is rallying behind the family. Their loss follows the loss of Mr. Domingo on that same stretch of road and Ms. Hernandez on the 101 in Lucadia. We need safe streets now. We don't know exactly when and where, but we do know we will lose more of our neighbors until speeds across Encinitas are brought down. Pleading with drivers to slow down on streets designed for high speeds is not going to do it. The long game must be to retrofit our streets with roundabouts, chicanes, other traffic-calling measures, so traffic flows smoothly but at moderate speed. We must continue to build sufficiently safe infrastructure to accommodate people who want to bike, use micro-mobility and walk to reduce the amount of car traffic. But retrofitting our streets is a decades-long, expensive process, even if we deploy quick-build infrastructure such as Quail Gardens Drive, such as the roundabout on Quail Gardens Drive. While we work towards that, we need safe streets now. Thank you for requesting increased sheriff enforcement. When Brody was killed in two thousand and twenty-three, we declared a state of emergency, and we likewise saw surge in sheriffs issuing speeding tickets then. But just as we have seen then, manpower is inefficient and unsustainable. We have better tools available, and that's automated enforcement. We can do red light cameras, speed cameras. Both of these are tools available to us. I should say, red light cameras are available to us right now. Speed cameras are mostly illegal in the state of California, but AB six forty-five allows a pilot program. We can lobby our state representatives so we can opt in to that program. Malibu just did it with SB twelve ninety-seven. We should be looking at ways to do that, too. Encinitas also has Vision Zero, which incredulously our two newest mobility Commissioners voted against, and its corresponding comprehensive safety action plan that identifies real things that we could do right now to make our streets safer. No one should have to go through what these families are going through, and the loss puts chills in the air for others who want to get out on the street by foot or bike. Let's get automated enforcement on the table and work a hell of a lot faster to retrofit our streets for safety. Thank you.
Hello, everybody. I'm glad to be here. I put a little bit of yellow on because I didn't have a yellow t-shirt, but my neighbors and I are here to support the Chakalian family and Emery. We're also here to beg city leaders to help change two things: the speed and driving patterns on all of our streets, especially Manchester Avenue. The two neighborhoods on Manchester Avenue have one way in and one way out. Keep in mind, there is a dedicated school bus pickup area on Manchester. We are faced with an extremely dangerous situation when exiting our neighborhoods because of the blind curb between the Nature Center and Ocean Cove Drive. Cars regularly drive at excessive speeds, up to sixty-five miles an hour, even though it had recently, the miles per hour had recently been reduced to thirty-five, which is awesome. It is so dangerous in exiting a car on Ocean Cove Drive, not to mention as a cyclist leaving on a bike. Some of my neighbors and I had asked the engineers before the Soundwall and Lagoon restoration began if we could get a four-way stoplight at Ocean Cove Drive. We had been told that a four-way stoplight was impossible because it was too close to the four-way stoplight that would be erected at the freeway entrance. There's actually an example of two very close intersections with four-way lights within a very short distance between I-5 and Perea's on La Costa Avenue. Please consider this request. At the very least, we would like more sheriff patrols slash motorcycle officers out at various times as speed traps, as well as driver feedback illumination signs, put back on one of the light poles on Manchester. It was, when we had it, it was very effective. We actually noticed cars slowing, and then it was taken away, and I was told there are not enough of these in the city and that they are being shuffled around the city. Please find somewhere in the budget to find, to buy a couple more of these to keep permanently on Manchester and other places. I agree with all the other speakers' ideas, too. We would also like a second thirty-five mile per hour sign between the Nature Center and Ocean Cove Drive, as there is only one, and by the time any car sees this one, they're almost at Ocean Cove Drive, and it's too late. We also have an extremely dangerous problem on Ocean Cove Drive. This may be a very short street, but we have lots of elderly people and neighbors walking their dogs, as well as little children, in our neighborhoods who regularly ride bikes and run across the street. Even though the posted speed limit is twenty-five miles an hour, some cars have been known to exceed forty-five miles an hour. We've asked for speed humps to be put in on Ocean Cove Drive, and we were told that we can't do this because it's a fire zone around the lagoon area, and the fire trucks have a hard time navigating. In fact, Camonito Ocean Cove, which is an extension up the hill of Ocean Cove Drive, has speed humps. Many streets in Encinitas have been retrofitted with speed humps that also need fire vehicle access, but the city has put these traffic obstacles, sorry, and the city has put these traffic obstacles to slow traffic. We are not sure why we can't have that on our street, but thank you for your hard work. I appreciate it.
Patty Hopkins?
Hi, my name's Patty Hopkins. I came here with a totally different issue, and I'm sorry, I'm very emotional now after hearing these people speak, because the road rage, based on the entitlement, these kids on e-bikes are dying. I, myself, have followed a child home, because, and then, you know, I pull up and the parents are mad at me, you know, for saying your child's going to die. I just saw him run five stop signs. He flipped me off when I said you ran a stop sign. It's horrific, and the parents are the problem, and the other problem is, is when gentlemen said, they don't have licenses. Their parents don't care. They got them these e-bikes during COVID so that they didn't have to parent. They didn't have to be inconvenienced to take their children. It's horrible. We're all seeing it in society today. These kids are horrible people. I'm sorry. I know that sounds brutal, but they're not being raised. They don't respect authority. They don't respect anything, okay? And my heart goes out to this family that I just heard about. I also serve on Central Committee D-three. I feel like nothing is getting done anywhere. I'm regretting my decision to get involved in politics. I came here today. My reason was the apartment going up in Encinitas on the corner of Encinitas Boulevard and Olivenheim and Ranger-Santa Fe Road. My office is right behind it. There's a daycare. This is, it's two hundred and four-unit apartment complex. The traffic through Olivenheim has already been horrific for years. Is there a plan in place? I mean, like, let's really think about that. It's already, Olivenheim is a thoroughfare, has been, in the mornings and at night, those people have wanted some sort of sense of rural. They're multimillion-dollar homes, and I hear there's low-income apartments, which, whatever, but my point is, is there a plan to navigate this traffic coming through that area? We're all looking in this complex where my office is at having to not renew our leases and move our businesses. So I don't know, and I'm sure I'll find out in some other fashion, but I wanted to put it out there today, that traffic is not being caught up with the building, these big, dense, you know, high-capacity apartments that are going in. Developers are winning, and our kids are losing, and I just want to say, please parent your children. Please. Thank you for your time.
Josh Armstrong. Following Josh will be Darius Digger, Judy Burrowfine, and then Jeff Shade.
Hello, Council. I believe I'm really standing in front of a very compassionate Council, and law enforcement as well. I believe you folks know things have to change, and I see that's already happening. I'm not a father, but the best I can relate to what the family's going through is what I saw my mom and dad go through when I lost my brother at twelve years old, and no family should go through this. And I'll leave it there. I have another video to present that's a little over six minutes.
Okay, as far as the six minutes, are there other people that are covering? Okay.
Changes are in effect. There is a new law that says you cannot hold your cell phone while you are driving. I think everyone should research this one and follow it, and I think we all need to also turn our wheels into halos and do our best to watch out for everybody and everything around us as we're driving. Here we are approaching Cero Street on Encinitas Boulevard going westbound. This needs to be fixed. We've got some foliage here in front of the speed limit sign. It needs to be cut back. And what's surprising to me is that from this point forward, there are no other speed limit signs until you get past Village Square Drive. I do believe that needs to be taken care of promptly. We should have at least one more speed limit sign before Village Square Drive. As I mentioned before, I do believe it'd be great if a stoplight could be put in here at Turner. I believe that is important to slow people down as they're reaching Village Square Drive. And how about contacting the property owner and putting something here on the sign to remind people what happened here, and to slow down, slow down, please, slow down, and put your phones down, and that goes for any street you're on. And here's Mayor Ehlers at Emery's Celebration of Life.
My goal today is twofold. I want to remember and commemorate I want to remember and commemorate Emery and rededicate ourselves to the task of preventing traffic fatalities. Emery's father and I, John, and I met last week and discussed what he, his family, and all the parents of Encinitas want. They want to feel confident and safe to send their kids off to school, to send them down to the store on their bikes, or off walking to a friend's house. I completely agree with that sentiment. The solution has many facets, but one main factor, and the main factor in driving safety, and you hit it right on it, is the driver. We're all drivers, or many of us are drivers here. Causes of accidents are many. It could be speeding, distracted driving, DUI, many others, but the common thread is driver behavior. John and I discussed this, and we agreed, we are fundamentally fighting a driver behavior problem. So I'm committed to working with John, working with city staff, with the entire city, to greatly improve driving behavior in Encinitas. We have several improvements already in play, from greater traffic enforcement to reduce speed limits. We've improved many of the roads structurally and added traffic calming measures. However, it all comes down to getting drivers to slow down and to pay attention. So I hope you'll join us in making Encinitas and all of North County a safer place for our kids and for all of us. Let's all remember Emery and rededicate ourselves to preventing future tragedies like this.
Yes, we all need to rededicate ourselves and do our best to be superhero drivers on the road, and it just can't happen anymore. When our children are dying, it's just, it's not okay. It's not okay. This has got to be, this has got to stop. And speaking of stopping, I caught this driver here going right through a stop sign on the 14th of this month, and this is just one of many things that have been happening here still in our city. We need more enforcement. And we've got what Ryan captured here, a red light runner here at Garden View crossing El Camino Real, and this is a driver behavior problem, as John has pointed out, and Mayor Ellers. Here's June 16th, 11:09, we have a drunk driver situation here. That looks like it turned out not so good. I don't know what the end result of this one was, but this is just, this is just too much. I'm never gonna see this sign the same ever again. I'm always gonna see it this way from now on. It just shouldn't have ever happened, and this should have been taken care of a long time ago. We've got, we've got too many lives at stake, and when our young people are being killed, yeah, I know, Otto, so many miss her.
This is for Emery, like a memory. We love you, Emery, so much. Thank you.
Giles.
Hello, everybody. Darius Digger, Lucadia. I was a commissioner on the, on this very committee some years ago. Cheers to you all for doing it. I just have some very general, big-picture kind of comments I'd like to make today about traffic planning, cycling, infrastructure, and such. Please don't be regressive. Yes, that's our national mood, it's in our national politics, but let's not let it infect our local thinking. Plan for kids, not cars. Use European models for cycling safety and circulation. It's not that their engineering is better, it's not. It's, in fact, it's more casual. They just kind of put bike lanes in and whatever. They don't have the litigiousness that we do, and that's the reason. And there are a lot of reasons for that. They all have universal health care, so they don't have to sue each other. The problem with our roads is not bikes, e-bikes, or pedestrians, it's cars, and especially tall cars, the people-killing machines that are known as SUVs and trucks. Have you seen the numbers on how many people die, you know, from being hit by SUVs? That, you should look into that. Of course, we can't outlaw those. Wish we could, but we can't anyway, but what we can do is slow things down. Lower speed limits, separate bike paths from car lanes. I urge you to do that kind of thinking. I've heard some of you on the Traffic Commission citing the statistics given to you by the sport cycling lobby group. Please don't trust the rhetoric of the spandex-clad cycle groups. Yes, they ride bikes and seem to represent all cyclists, but they don't. Their interests are antithetical to those of kids biking to school or people biking on errands to reduce traffic and emissions. In reality, they're more like me and my childhood friends playing football in the street, using the public streets for recreational activity. I have nothing against this, I do it myself, but we shouldn't be planning our infrastructure based on those needs. You plan it for transportation cyclists. Yeah, yeah, I've heard, seen the horrible statistics on the dangers of the Cardiff 101 bike lanes. I personally don't believe those numbers coming from a self-interested lobby group. Remember, they don't take into consideration how many more people are biking on that route now, probably 10, 20 times as many on weekends, or because of the increased numbers of cyclists of all ages, how many more potentially fatal accidents would have occurred if those bollards, et cetera, were not there. So the best thing we can do is lower speeds, plan for kids, not cars.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Judy Burlefein, and I want to thank you, Mayor, for your words at Emery's Memorial. Yes, we have to change driver behavior. The question is, how do we do that? Increasing enforcement is one of the ways we can, and so I thank you for hiring two new deputies, and I look forward to following the statistics on number of tickets issued. The deputies can't be everywhere all the time, but we do have options. As mentioned already, the state passed AB 645, which initially allowed six cities to participate in an electronic speed ticketing pilot program. Since then, Sacramento and Malibu have stepped up to join those cities, and I recommend that Encinitas also step up. But first, let me clarify. This is unlike the program that Commissioner Medoc mentioned in Salzburg, where he received a large ticket for driving 3 miles per hour over the 15 mile-per-hour speed limit. In this program, tickets are only issued for drivers exceeding the speed limit by 11 miles per hour, and fines are determined by, based on how much the speed limit has been exceeded. In the first month of the pilot in San Francisco, 31,000 warnings were issued. They didn't issue tickets the first month, only warnings. Nearly a quarter of drivers receiving warnings were going more than 16 miles per hour above the speed limit. The time is too limited to walk you through the math, I'm happy to share it with you later. The bottom line is this: Once you extrapolate the data to Encinitas, it turns out we've potentially missed 2,000 speeding drivers with our ticketing since January 1st of 2025. We've only issued 376 tickets in that timeframe. I urge the city to join the AB 645 pilot. Once you demonstrate interest, there are many of us anxious to support you. I also urge you to adopt Vision Zero, as it supports using new technologies to improve safety and can unlock funding to help implement them. Thank you.
Council members, Mr. Mayor, thank you for the time. My name's Jeff Shade. I'm the owner of Lucadia Cycleria on the 101, and I'm here just to speak about one specific area I think a lot was covered in the MTSE's plan and work, and I agree with most of the speakers here in joining them in the safety, overall safety of the streets and bicycle safety. That is our first concern, and it just so happens, we're in the heart of it right now along the 101, so I wanted to just, and I've written a couple of letters and have gotten feedback, thank you for that, but that area in front of our building, where there is no sidewalk, there's no passable sidewalk to speak of, the 101 is, there is really no signage either, so it's extremely dangerous during the cityscape project. What we're asking for is just, we know the cityscape project is gonna be long-term, but the signage is atrocious. I wrote it the other morning, and there is one speed limit sign down by the hotel on the north side, and you don't see another speed limit sign until after our shop, well beyond after our shop. So that's incorporating about a mile stretch of the 101 where there's one 25 mile-an-hour sign. There's no directional lanes, there's no lights for pedestrians to cross the 101. Now granted, the east side of the road is just a couple parallel spots, but people use that trail to walk their dogs and do other things. So easing a crossway seems like a temporary easy fix to me, but I don't know how all these things work, but I wanted to just address this stretch and then show my support for all the other speakers in the general safety. The other comment is e-bike-specific. The e-bikes that are not bicycles do not have pedals, they're known as sarans, some of you may have seen them. They are, they should be classified differently, they're not bicycles. They go 60 miles an hour. We preach safety on those bikes, that's first and foremost. They are not legal on the road. Parents need to understand, they are not, we tell every parent, this is not a street legal bicycle. It's not a bicycle, it's an off-road motorcycle. So I'd like to see some action on that, specific to those types of vehicles. And then overall, I agree with the sentiment on e-bikes and e-bike safety. So that was my little two cents on the 101 stretch. I appreciate you listening, and thank you all for your service.
Following Chris Giles is Mark Wizineski with two time donations, one from Brad Roth, who is present, and Kathleen Lindeman, who is present, then Laura Van Dusen, and then John Chilikian.
Hello, my name's Chris Giles, Encinitas resident and member of Encinitas Bike Walk. I want to thank all members of City Council and Commission. Mayor Ellers, I wanted to commend you for speaking at Emery's Memorial. Your words both then and at previous City Council meetings have consistently demonstrated your genuine compassion and empathy for the families affected. Your words and acknowledgement are essential steps in making impactful, positive change towards safer streets in Encinitas. You stated that changing driver behavior is the key to creating safer streets and eliminating needless deaths and injuries. There are multiple strategies to change driver behavior, including public engagement, enforcement, and education. With that, the council has already stepped up law enforcement, and we're already seeing positive results. Thank you for that. However, there's a crucial, it is crucial to recognize that long-term manual traffic enforcement isn't sustainable. Hopefully, automated enforcement and speed limit reduction will be a viable option as a supplement for long-term sustainable speed enforcement. All of you who sit on the City Council have the unique power to influence and steer the direction of city staff, Mobility and Traffic Safety Commission, traffic engineering, and the contractors to provide, to prioritize safer street design, regulation, and policy. This is where you can make the biggest difference. As you review the commission's work today, please remember that the unique leverage you possess that can make a difference for children in Encinitas to have the autonomy and freedom to safely ride their bikes to school or walk across the street to get dinner. While today's meeting is primarily about approving the commission's work plan, I would like to provide a little context regarding a related issue: The HSIP grants awarded to the city of Encinitas. For those unfamiliar, the HSIP, or Highway Safety Improvement Program, grants are awarded to cities that have unfortunately seen a large number of collisions and fatalities on their streets. They're intended to improve infrastructure for the safety of pedestrians and cyclists. On the latest round, Encinitas applied for and won all four HSIP grants which, that they applied for, which according to Abe, our traffic engineer, was extraordinary, and that's not a good thing. The city of Encinitas needs to humbly acknowledge that we have a serious traffic issue. These grants and the street designs to which they apply must be explicitly used to improve street safety rather than enhancing circulation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mark is followed by Laura Van Dusen, John Chilikian, and then Sadie Weinberg.
Good afternoon, Mayor Ellers, Deputy Mayor Lyons, and members of the council. At your last joint meeting, I made several recommendations regarding signage at roundabouts. I am very pleased to see that this was listed as Task One on the proposed work plan. Thank you for the commissioners, for your unanimous support for this action. I would like to present a brief review and further suggestions for your consideration as you move forward on this task. My involvement in this issue started when I was driving south on Highway 101. And this is what you're presented with, and in the distance, you can't see it, but there is a red and white yield sign. Also, it's not located on the straightaway. It's located after you've already started the curve. So, and it's not clear what or who is supposed to yield, when or why. I drove into the roundabout and was at the midpoint attempting to drive back north. And this is what you're presented that way. But I was prevented by four cars that barely slowed down, did not yield, and only when I blew my horn, one car stopped. I was given a single finger salute for my interrupting his progress, but I was able then to continue north. So this is what you're presented. The exit here sign, that's from the parking area in the area there. You can see the tree branches partially obstruct the pedestrian crossing in the distance, and you can't see the yield sign at all. Still can't see the yield sign. Finally, you can see the yield sign, but by then, you're almost in the intersection. So this might have helped me, but again, you don't know how, why you're supposed to We have this on Lucadia Boulevard that helps a little bit, but still not clear enough. Carlsbad, at their busy roundabout, has a different but better approach: A flashing yield sign visible from a distance with an enhancement. Yield to traffic in circle. I suggest you duplicate this approach for consistency, as it would benefit both our communities in an unambiguous driver education. Back to El Porte. Back to El Portal. There's the flashing sign, partially obstructed. So we have three pedestrian crossings at this roundabout, only one of which has a stop And this is part of the route of students coming from the west side of Highway 101 to go to the El Portal undercrossing to get to Paul Ecki Central School. But there are no pedestrian activated flashing lights. These crossings are also utilized on foggy days and at night by both students and non-students. However, between El Portal and Lucadia Boulevard, there are two crossings where these signals have been installed on 101 to allow passage to parking areas. Note the sign on the center median there is actually a two-way sign. There's another sign on the backside, but it's not visible to drivers driving south because it's entirely obstructed by the tree in front of it. So either the tree should be pruned to have an unobstructed view of the sign, or the tree should be removed. And I'm a tree guy, but I put safety for pedestrians above trees. Years ago, there was a group of concerned parents and students called Let's Move Encinitas. And they made a presentation to the City Council for safety improvements at Paul Ecki Central School. And one of the improvements is not only three-way stop signs, but flashing stop signs. You know how to do it. Now, the El Portal undercrossing is part of the safe route to school, and it doesn't warrant a stop sign or even anything to slow down drivers? I think it's time to make some enhancements there. So this is the first time I've relied on AI. But let me read along with the screen there for those of you who can't see it. The primary goals of the Lucadia Streetscape Project are to revitalize the North Coast Highway 101 corridor in Lucadia, California by enhancing mobility, safety, and the overall character of this area. This includes improving pedestrian and cyclist experiences, beautifying the streetscape, and addressing longstanding issues like flooding. Here's more detailed breakdown. Enhanced mobility and safety. The project aims to improve traffic flow and safety for all users, including pedestrians, cyclists, and vehicles. This includes wider sidewalks, dedicated bike lanes, improved crosswalks, and new traffic There are several initiatives and resources in Encinitas, including the Lucadia area, aimed at creating safer routes to school for students who walk or bike. Here's what you can find about safe routes to school efforts in Lucadia and Encinitas. One, City of Encinitas Safe Routes to School Program. The City of Encinitas is actively involved in the Safe Routes to School Program, which focuses on making it safer and more convenient for students to travel to and from school by walking and biking. The program includes infrastructure improvements like speed feedback signs, restriping, curb extensions, traffic circles, and traffic calming measures. Community input is a crucial part of the process, helping to identify areas where walking and biking enhancements are needed around schools. The Lucadia Streetscape Project includes improvements to increase safety for bicyclists and pedestrians. And I have no idea why flashing signals was not provided at El Portal for the students going to school. Thank you very much for your time and for the Commission's work. I appreciate your support.
Laura, Laura Van Dusen, followed by John Chilikian, Sadie Weinberg, and then Laura Grimmer, or Laura Grimmer.
Hello, my name is Laura Van Dusen. I'm friends with the Chilikian family. I live off of Via Cantabria, which is also a very busy, scary street to live off of. I wanted to also acknowledge and thank you, say thank you to Claire, Brody's mom, for being here tonight, as well as Emery's parents. Takes a lot of bravery. The item that I would like to speak on tonight is in regards to the 900,000 HSIP grant for safety improvements to Encinitas Boulevard. At the last Mobility and Safety Traffic Commission meeting on June 9th, about an hour into the meeting, our city engineer answered several questions from the Commission regarding different potential options for this project. When asked if adding a third lane would impact the speed of cars on Encinitas Boulevard, Abe stated that the balance between combining narrower lanes and adding a third lane, the result would be an increase in the speed of traffic. When asked if adding wheel stops near St. John's School and Oak Crust would increase the safety of our children, Abe's response, and I quote, was absolutely. Additionally, he said, in my perfect world, if I keep it at two lanes, I will have a very, very wide bike lane and a very good buffer where the wheel stops or bollards, no matter what the densities, will not hurt anyone. Commissioner Medoc disputed this. However, common ground was found, and they, and he agreed that an eight-foot bike lane with a four-foot buffer, he would be interested in, and that amount of separation, he would be interested in supporting this feature, which would be possible with two car lanes. Abe also stated that turn pockets can do a lot to enhance the flow of traffic even without adding a third lane. Abe stated that if we were to move forward with a third lane, we would have a very limited right-of-way with a six-foot bike lane and a two-foot buffer, and that there would not be enough room for wheel stops because of the tight spacing. Later in the meeting, Commissioner Templin moved to recommend a third lane, turn pockets, narrow, and narrow lanes. I'm just really confused why we are recommending to have a third lane on Encinitas Boulevard. I realize that there are some priorities here to increase circulation, but we need to consider all factors mentioned here. We know that a third car lane will lead to an increased speed and prevent us from providing adequate protection to our pedestrians and cyclists from these high-speed vehicles. We also know that turn pockets can do a lot to enhance the flow of traffic even without adding a third lane. According to the United States Department of Transportation, the purpose of this grant is to reduce traffic fatalities. I'm requesting that you revise your motion and do not recommend a third car lane to Encinitas Boulevard.
Thank you.
My name is John Chilikian, Emery's dad. It's been exactly two months on the calendar since Emery was killed when crossing a green light at a crosswalk. I've met with several of you in the interim, and thank you very much for both your affect and your emotion with me. This is my wife, Bridget. Unfortunately, I have not seen any direct action take place since the death of Emery. I understand Commissioner Gross did circulate a memo shortly after Emery was killed that included the four deaths in 2025 stating that there was a state of emergency required based off of the number of fatalities per normalized population density. California national average is three, the nation's average is two, and we were approaching normalized above that just with the four that took place within 2025. I'm not sure of the outcome of that memo. In April, on the 21st, the MTSC reviewed the detailed road, local road safety plan, or Vision Zero, if you will, that the city commissioned out for development. It was a pretty comprehensive report in my review. In that report, they deemed that the number one corridor for safety enhancements was Encinitas Boulevard from Fourth Street to Sarro Street, which includes the intersection where Emery was killed. Namely, that intersection where she was killed, Village Square Drive, was named explicitly for pedestrian, pedestrian or enhancements to increase pedestrian safety. Unfortunately, the commission decided to not move forward and present that to council. They rather debated the merits or the aspirational nature of the Vision Zero plan and its timelines, and that it was a different administration that moved forward to commission that work through. Unfortunately, no alternatives or immediate actions were suggested during that meeting, just a debate on whether it should move forward or not. In both the May and June MTSC meetings, there was no mention of safety enhancements proposed because of, after Emery's death, but rather there were lengthy discussions about bollards, wheel stops, and widening Encinitas Boulevard with the grant money we received. As a father of a child who was killed crossing a green intersection, it cuts deep to see no action. As a father of a nine-year-old who uses his feet and his pedal bike to go to school, it leaves me frightened and concerned and scared and angry. We lost a daughter, but this city lost a community member. My daughter, at her celebration of life, a gentleman approached me and he said, your daughter was the only reason my daughter promoted from third grade. Emery noticed that child was being bullied. Emery took it upon herself to keep that child safe, escorted her to class, FaceTimed her every night. She did that. Bridget and I didn't know about that. This is what Emery did for our community. I will go a couple more seconds if you don't mind. On the screen, this is the letter that that little girl wrote to give to Emery's three best friends. "I'm sorry for your loss and mine. All I want to do is cry. I need some help if you will come. If you can come with that would be great." This is what a third grader wrote to my daughter's best friends after she left us. "Safety is not a privilege, it's a right. Please, please perform some actions quickly for the rest of this community and my nine-year-old son." Thank you.
Hi, I'm Bridget and John's neighbor. For many years, almost every morning, since Emery started kindergarten, we walked our children to school along the same short route. I watched Bridget lovingly and attentively teach her children how to be safe, look both ways, pay attention, and engage in their world. On those daily walks, I felt that Bridget and I were kindred spirits, committed to teaching our children that they had the agency to navigate the world on their own without cars. It is deeply and profoundly unfair that Emery and her family, family were penalized for this value. We live in one of the best climates on the planet, yet we have created a system in which we have to get into a car to do almost anything. And now that system has made it unsafe for us to travel in any other way. How do we change this? How do we create a city that we not only live in, but can be in? There have been many negative press articles about recent road changes, but those articles are not telling the whole story. But what are they telling us? One, that change is hard and changing habits is slow. Two, we can't just fix one part of a broken system because drivers, and by drivers, I mean all of us, come into those areas with the same speed and inattention because the changes are incongruent with a system that is set up to privilege and prioritize car travel. Let's make Encinitas an example of what is possible, what an integrated walking, cycling, and driving city can look like with slower speeds managed by infrastructure and enforcement, protected walking and biking pathways, and maybe accessible and free bus routes. There have been some great improvements, but there are still so many problem spots that must be addressed. Let's focus on making real structural changes where Emery and another cyclist were killed earlier just this year, less than half a mile apart. I mean, that's bonkers. Like, that's so crazy. What if we can start with implementing speed cameras on Encinitas Boulevard between Ranch of Santa Fe and El Camino Real? But also let me be clear, cameras should only be the beginning. Infrastructure must be put in place to visually signal to drivers to slow down. And finally, I just have to say, as a mother of two e-bike riders, I resent people telling us that we don't care about our children and our children are bad people. That is absolutely not true. I just want us all to remember what it's like to be Emery's age, 12 to 15. We were all there. We wanted to be independent from our parents, and we should have safe passage to do that. My son was a punk. He was totally a punk. But now he's turning 16 and he is a beautiful person. And Brody was lost in that time. You know, that's just not fair. It's our job to protect these children with infrastructure.
Nick? Laura? Laura Grimmer, followed by Toni Krantz, and then Jessica Dashar?
And just a time check, since we're over our one, that's it? Yeah. So we're going to obviously go over our one hour and delay the start of our next meeting. So, because we do need some time to deliberate.
Thanks for letting me speak, even though we're over the limit. I'm Laura Grimmer. I'm a almost 20-year Encinitas resident, San Diego native. I moved to Encinitas to be with my now husband and because it's a literally like beautiful place, it's paradise. I have seen so many changes on the streets here since we moved here. I don't know how long all of you have lived here. I don't know what part of Encinitas you live in. I live on Delphineam Street, which ends at Encinitas Boulevard. It's a nightmare. My kids, we used, we were zoned for Parkdale Lane, which is Emery's school. This is Emery in kindergarten. I took this picture. She was my daughter's best friend. We loved going to Parkdale Lane because all the families could walk to school. It's a walkable village. It was also kind of hard for us to see that because we lived further away. We couldn't walk to Parkdale. And after COVID, the shutdown, we switched to a school, a charter school that we could walk to. But guess what? My kids have to walk down Encinitas Boulevard and cross at Westlake, and it's a scary place for them to cross. And we've talked about switching schools again because we feel like they might be safer in a car, which is bananas also, because cars are, you know, super dangerous. And I'm, I'm rambling. I didn't prepare well, and so many people have said so many incredible things with data and numbers, and I certainly can't improve on anything that's been said. But please consider, reconsider adding a third lane to Encinitas Boulevard is, it just seems like anathema to everything that we're working towards. We're making, is that supposed to be like a highway? I mean, none of the other east-west corridors in our city have three lanes. I drive up and down Encinitas Boulevard all the time, taking my kids to camp, to karate, to school, whatever, on days that they don't walk. And I see every day, multiple times a day, which is why I'm like, where do you guys live? Do you see the way people drive? And please just, yeah, this is just my impassioned plea to please think about the safety of our kids, of ourselves, of our elderly that I see walking as well. That third lane just seems like a terrible idea. And I know I live, you know, right there where they're building that big apartment complex at Quail Gardens in Encinitas. I know it's going to add a ton of traffic. And I was a secret consultant for 13 years. I know all about level of service. I think everyone in this room is willing to deal with slower, lower levels of service and slower traffic if safety is the trade-off. So please, think about everything you're hearing here tonight. And I will come back to every meeting and I'll speak to everyone in honor of this girl and her brother and my daughter who lost her friend. And, yeah, that's it.
I was able to attend the celebration of life that was held at the Flower Fields to remember and as a community mourn the loss of a 12-year-old girl, Emery. And I was touched by the outpouring of love and also the experience of pain that I felt seeing young teenagers having to mourn the loss of their friend. I also would like to mention to Mayor Ehlers, your comments were I also would like to mention to Mayor Ehlers, your comments were spot-on, and I was impressed that you could make it through without bawling. I don't think I would have been able to do that. But your comments were really appreciated. I think that one of the things that I noted was the mention of the declaration of an emergency for Brody. And as you may recall, we declared an emergency here in Encinitas upon his death, and we were pretty much copycatting Carlsbad. They had had a tragic death in their community as well, and I would strongly encourage you to declare another emergency. We've had four deaths in Encinitas this year, and it's really necessary to call the public's attention to the need to slow down and pay more attention when you're driving. I brought in this cover here. I highly encourage people reading these books, this book, they produce this report, "Our Streets Are Dangerous By Design." I was certainly trained as a council member to not talk about our streets being dangerous, so I didn't. I talked about our streets being less safe and more safe, and I think that it's important for you to recognize that there are plenty of things that you can do that are not expensive that would make our streets more safe. The other thing I was reflecting upon when mourning the loss of Emory was that Encinitas Boulevard had a fatality in a crosswalk in 2017, and I experienced every fatality, every death in this city with great pain. And when this one happened, I think it caught, brought to my attention just how much work we have to do. And it was the death of 61-year-old Carmen M. Gonzalez. She was walking in a crosswalk across Encinitas Boulevard at Ballour Drive just after 6:00 PM when two cars approached the area. The first driver yielded to the woman, but the second driver went around the yielded car, traveling through the intersection and striking the pedestrian. It's time to do more, and one of the things we do need to do is narrow lanes so that people slow down. 10 feet is wide enough.
Hi, my name is Jessica Dasher. Thank you, Mayor Ehlers and City Council, for the time to address council. I'll be brief, since much I was gonna talk about has already been covered. It's imperative that we address these ongoing issues of speeding and red light running in Encinitas. Bicyclists and pedestrians will never be safe if these issues persist. Like others, I urge you to declare a state of emergency to enable immediate and substantial progress in making our streets safer in honor of Emory. I also have serious concerns about the proposal to add a third lane in Encinitas Boulevard. This will result in higher speeds counterproductive to all our goals. In experience, the traffic flow west of Quail Gardens isn't even congested enough to warrant a third lane. On a positive note, I'm happy to hear we will have two additional officers assigned to traffic enforcement. However, as others mentioned, if six is all we can have, we must consider complementing this effort with alternative tools such as red light cameras and speed cameras. Implementing dynamic speed display signs has also been proven effective for managing speeds in transition zones and could aid in monitoring speed data over time. Additionally, temporary construction-type electronic message boards at critical locations could serve as proactive warnings to ensure that drivers are aware of the consequences of speeding and failing to stop. This could be part of a public campaign that is also crucial. Everyone should know that we prioritize safety here in Encinitas. In light of our current challenges, it makes sense to adjust the delay of walk sign signals, ensuring they indicate it is safe to walk only after all vehicular traffic has completely cleared the intersection. This might result in longer wait times for vehicles, but could significantly enhance pedestrian safety. Furthermore, implementing more exclusive, traffic-only and all-way pedestrian periods similar to those downtown should also be considered in critical areas, as well as addition of blinking lights and signage wherever possible. Thank you.
Okay. And I really appreciate all the comments.
I thought it was very important that we hear fully, full three minutes from everybody. I know we went over our time, and it will cut into some of our time here, but really, it comes down to, we're all the drivers, right? And it won't be just the five of us taking action, it's gonna be all of us together taking action to get to all the rest of people out there. There is no magic bullet that we have to go and attack this at every level, on all levels. And like I say, I still think this is fundamentally a driver behavior problem, but it comes in all sorts of shapes. With that, I think the city manager had some comments about meetings and where we've been.
Thank you, Mayor Ehlers, Council. I do want to let you folks know that we will be bringing the Comprehensive Safety Action Plan to council, as this is a work plan for a commission. Our commissions are recommending bodies. There have been times where the commissions recommend for and against. City council is the last and final decision. So we will be bringing the Comprehensive Safety Action Plan to city council. We're gonna do it at a special meeting because it is a rather large topic, and we want to give that time. I also wanted to reference the H-SIP grants. Those will also be going to council. Again, MTSC is a recommending body, and there are several options. We have four H-SIP grants that we received in different areas. We will present some different options to council, and again, council will be the final decision-maker on the design of those H-SIP grants. These will be done at public meetings, and we will take public input. So, and that will also be coming in August. So I wanted you folks to know, operationally, we're on it. One thing that I do want to look at as city manager, as with any plan, and I've discussed with Director of Engineering, Bankston, it will take money to implement things. So when we bring a plan forward to council, I want to have some type of financial plan to go with that. So I think that that's really important. So this gives us enough time to look at that, and depending on council action, because they are the final decision-makers, we will look to see what funding, whatever they would like to implement and how we can do that. So I do want, I just want to declare that up tonight so everyone knows what will be coming forward in August.
And if you or staff could directly address the widening or the third lane on Encinitas Boulevard, that's not a finalized action. That has to come up to this group.
Absolutely, and there will be several options on the H-SIP. One of the things as we look to see, we have to make sure that we meet the goal of that H-SIP and we follow kind of the guidelines in which we receive that. So yes, there will be options that will be presented to council, more than one.
Okay. So now we're gonna kind of switch mode here. We're gonna come back to the agenda item tonight is to discuss the work plan for the Mobility Traffic Safety Commission. So with that, what I would say is, we've got, I'd like to hear from the Traffic Commission too, the Mobility Traffic Safety Commission, but I'll start with maybe one roundup here and then see if there's anybody on the Traffic Safety Commission. Again, we're trying to get this done in the next 15 minutes, so I'll recognize Deputy Mayor Lyons. Question?
Is there a presentation or anything? Are we?
We, oh, we had, yeah, it was quick, so.
Thank you. I know we're here today and it's on the agenda to contribute some thoughts to the work plan, and I do want to do that. But before we go there, I do want to propose to my council colleagues that we do declare a roadway safety state of emergency. And I'm saying that because, for two reasons. One is, I know we're doing some work behind the scenes, and our city manager just talked about some of that, and we consider this a very, very high priority, and we're rallying behind solutions. But I do want to express to the community that this rises to that higher level of a state of emergency. There may be funding that we need to allocate, and there may be some priorities that we need to make actionable very quickly, and the state of emergency for roadway safety will put us in that category. So I would like to make that proposal and move, make a motion, put the motion on the floor to create the roadway safety state of emergency.
Okay, and the question to the city attorney would be, would that, that's not an agenda item tonight, is that? It may not be a motion we can take tonight, but we can agendize it and do it as soon as we can.
May I hear from the city attorney?
Thank you. That is correct, Mayor Ehlers. This particular item is not on the agenda, would need to be on the agenda in order for the council to take binding action on this.
But we can take the action to agendize it tonight, so.
I'd like to take, revise the motion to request that it be agendized at our first meet, at our next meeting.
That is proper.
Thank you.
And I'll second that. Did you have anything else, or?
I do.
Councilmember Schaefer?
No.
Oh, can we call a question first? I'm sorry. I forgot we had a motion a second, so, then we'll recognize Councilmember Schaefer.
Could I keep the floor?
Sure.
I wasn't, wasn't.
Oh, okay, I thought you said you were.
No, I am not. I would like to add to the work plan, the Vision Zero. I'd like to recommend that we add to the work plan, Vision Zero. We do have it as our policy, and it is been mentioned today quite often. It is focused on roadway safety. It is focused on providing zero fatalities on our roadways. So my recommendation would be to add that as a specific work plan item for MTSC. Also, I'll try to just be brief. I apologize for this, but we do have a lot to add or talk about. Last year, I think it was maybe over a year ago, maybe it was in 2023, the city staff put a lot of time and effort into assessing what traffic improvements needed to happen around our housing element projects. I have talked with the city manager about this. This is probably, this is something that will come forward to this new city council as an information item, is what I understand. But I would like for our mobility and traffic safety to also have improvements to roadways associated with the housing element projects included in their work plan. And the third thing I'll add is, I would be in support, if my colleagues are up here, to also add traffic signal timing, which is the sequencing of our traffic signals, which also helps with pedestrian crossing, and cameras for enforcement, which might involve the pilot program to the work plan.
Okay, with that, Councilmember Schaefer?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to address the comments on Emory and the life loss, and there's nothing we're gonna do to replace Emory. And I will say, the compassion the community has for is definitely well-heard, and we are absolutely attempting and have been attempting to change the city. Our job up here, we cannot change the behavior of humans. That is not anything that we have the power to do, nor would we want to. That's part of our benefits of being an American. The fact is, is we can actually change the roads, change the way we design and the uses by which we use it, the way we educate our kids, primarily, obviously, adults are adults and they're gonna have the ability to use the roads how they see fit. And that's been kind of the intention from the get-go, to separate bikes and cars. The fact is, is this town, there was a former mayor here that talked about, this town, when there was only about 20,000 people in it, was designed with T-intersections and intentionally trying to traffic calm back then. And that's now caused issues on thoroughfares and places where people and with extra stoplights, namely there in Encinitas Boulevard next to the freeway, where now we have seven stoplights, where there could have maybe been three or four, helping traffic flow and stuff of that nature. Again, not to talk specifically about that, but improving mobility and circulation has since received data and from a car repair person in town who is an avid enthusiast, but explaining that some of the traffic calming is causing driver anxiety, and that driver anxiety is rapidly increasing other issues. So on places where people have thoroughfares, we need to have ability to move through there. So just because a third lane comes or doesn't come doesn't mean that that's not the end-all-be-all. What it does mean is that we want to put in place simultaneously places for pedestrians to travel safely in roads that already go 30 miles an hour and below. That's the safety mark, 30 miles an hour. Encinitas Boulevard going from 45 down to 40 still hasn't met the 30 mile an hour mark. 85% higher survival rate below 30. So we're not gonna get El Camino or Encinitas Boulevard, either of those, down to below 30. So I just want to make sure that everybody here realizes this is not an attempt to counter what you're saying. We want to make places like Village Park, streets there where we can hammer somebody going a half a mile over the speed limit that is designed for 20, 25 miles an hour and slower, where these bikes do go at that speed, where pedestrians can cross, where people are on streets going slower because that's where they intend to go slower. Meanwhile, where they need to go places, i.e. the freeway, nobody plays on the freeway because it's expected you're going faster. That's how Encinitas Boulevard and the thoroughfares need to become a little bit because we want people to go to those places to get to where they have to go versus going off of, we have people speeding in the background, we have people speeding on Melba, we have people speeding all the way through Village Park, we have people speeding in areas that we don't need them speeding where there's higher residential count. So we want the, we want the cars to be on the roads they're supposed to be going at the speed they're designated to be going. That is fact. They have to get somewhere, at some point, they have to be able to get somewhere. And most of the people in town live here but work out of town. So in the mornings and in the evening, they're gonna have to be getting on that big thing out there called the freeway that gets them to and from. There's nothing we can do about that. And the tragedies that have been experienced is a lot of times due to the poor drivership and the personality of the person in that car, mainly trying to speed up in areas where they can't go faster or going down Ballour, the wrong streets. So I just want to make sure that the group here realizes that. I want to say it to your face because I'm not sure you'll be here at the follow-on meetings where we actually do take care of this, because it's gonna be re-agendized. I just want to make sure that we are a heavy attempt and have been an attempt since day one to separate cars and pedestrians at the highest rate possible in the city. So I'll leave it there. As far as the work plan, I appreciate the order of the work plan, and I see the voters on the side. I will say that I'm in favor of the priority, if you use the voters on the side and the reason that they're in 1 to 10 order, I am in favor of the work plan in priority order. Period.
Okay, I'm up next. First thing I wanted, the state of emergency, I think I've been operating under that mode anyways before even this tragedy happened because of Brody, and we voted on that in the previous council. I'm all for re-adopting that and restating it so we get more public information out there, more in front of the public, because again, we need to change behaviors out in public. The Vision Zero is an adopted plan we are pursuing. I'm okay, I'm, I will agree with you adding it as a work plan item here. Any ideas that our Traffic Commission comes up with that helps us get closer to Vision Zero? I think what I've been saying to people is out there, we have to turn all the knobs. We can't just pick one knob or the other. What I had felt coming into this year is we had been turning all the structural street geometry law options, but we hadn't looked at increasing enforcement. Again, when I look back through the records, we hadn't added a deputy for traffic in at least 15 years, and we, the traffic has grown here in no doubt and no uncertainty. So that was the first foremost priority. We just adopted last week our budget that includes those two deputies, and that's great. By the way, two deputies means two cars, two deputies, but it's really only one additional shift, right? Because it covers the two. But it's a significant improvement. The sheriff, Captain Watts, has been showing his leadership and increasing enforcement. If you didn't notice, on last Wednesday, he had every one of the sheriffs, deputies included, I see the sheriff nodding yes, everyone out on traffic enforcement. That is the type of real action that will get us to change behavior as more people that are violating laws get tickets. I saw personally three deputies doing traffic enforcement on my drive from Alvinheim to City Hall last week in the morning, and it was great, and I appreciate that. And so now, starting July 1st, they'll be able to hire two more deputies on traffic alone. So we are doing things, we are, and again, every knob, we gotta turn. We gotta keep dialing up, and then we have to make sure we all, all talk to our friends and neighbors and make sure, I'm constantly looking at my speedometer going, "Am I going the speed limit?" And I get passed all the time, and, you know, if we get, the most of us driving the speed limit, then the really aggressive drivers will have to stay behind us ultimately. And we will see, I think Josh, Josh showed the picture of somebody passing on Vulcan. I had a bicycle pass me on Vulcan, and I was going two miles ahead of the speed limit. So, you know, we, this is just everyone acting in unison, abiding by the law and slowing down. Again, I'm gonna go back to the, one of the big factors I think we haven't Again, I'm going to go back to the, one of the big factors I think we haven't addressed enough is basically the distracted driving, the inattention, DUI speeding. If I look at, as I'm driving, I look and I see so many people on their phones. I won't pick up my phone while I'm driving. I just won't do it. And I want to see DUI. The El Portal roundabout data, when we looked at all the crashes that occurred there, three-quarters, at least three-quarters, were DUI-related. So there's another area. We have to do focused enforcement because whether you're distracted on your phone, a person is distracted on their phone, whether they're drunk or whatever, doesn't matter. That's how people get hurt and killed, and we got to stop that and stop it now. So I think I've already said I support the Vision Zero. I support the emergency. I support tasking, adding to the Traffic Commission work plan, looking at, is it SB 6? The pilot program. I would be interested in doing that.
645.
645, yeah. And then, what was the other last one? Was, oh, the, somebody talked about traffic light timing, crosswalk timing. I believe we already have a program, and maybe staff could speak to the LPI, the Lead Pedestrian Interval, that is exactly for that purpose, to make it safer to cross. And can you maybe give us a quick update on where we are on that?
Yes, correct, Mayor. We have a $1.2 million grant from the state, HCP, from the previous cycle, and discovering all the costs of upgrading all of our traffic signal equipment, all of our controllers, adding new crosswalk markings wherever they're not available, adding some ramps, adding some additional pavement markings. And it had already started. The controllers were upgraded. Push buttons are being upgraded as we speak.
And for the laypeople, the audience, can you describe what LPI does?
Absolutely.
In other words, it lets the pedestrian take control of the intersection?
Correct. So as we all know, once the pedestrian enters a crosswalk, they occupy the crosswalk, and a vehicle cannot enter the crosswalk. This LPI, whenever you push a button, usually you get your white pedestrian symbol in front of you to start crossing at the same time as the green coming up for the vehicle adjacent to you. So a vehicle, a lot of time, is able to turn right faster than you enter the crosswalk, into the crosswalk and occupy the crosswalk. What LPI would do would give you additional three seconds or four seconds before the green appears. So you will get your white pedestrian symbol to enter the crosswalk before the green. The signal would be still on red in those three, four seconds. But once you enter, even if the signal turns green, the vehicle is not allowed to turn right into the crosswalk. You basically get the chance to occupy the crosswalk before the signal turns green.
So it freezes traffic for that three seconds and lets the pedestrian... So I think it's right along the lines of what somebody suggested we do. It's in process. It was the last council that voted it in. With that, I'm going to yield to Councilmember San Antonio.
I just want to say that I definitely hear everybody here in support of the Chilicans. You know, I grew up in such a different time, growing up in Village Park. I was able, latchkey kid, cruising from Village Park all the way to El Comino Real by myself or with my sister, who's younger than me, just cruising around, doing whatever we wanted to do. Of course, my parents probably didn't know that, but it's just a different time. And I know that every life is valuable. And I have two young kids, and the last thing, as we're teaching them now, we're just keeping them alive before, and now we're teaching them. So now I'm actually becoming a parent and showing them what to do and what not to do. And that is so tough. I hear you, a young lady in the green hat. I wish, I forgot your name, but it is hard. It's hard to let your kids go. It's hard to do that. And especially when something like this happens, it really definitely brings everything back up to the forefront of what's important, which is safety. But to what I also understand, I have to back up Councilman Schaefer. We have a really big mobility issue here, or just with what we have, the housing element that's growing. So I get it. We need to push that traffic into these thoroughfares. I mean, I don't want to be driving down my street, speeding through my street to get to the next street, to get around all this traffic. So I understand that the three lanes sounds crazy, like it sounds like, oh my gosh, everybody's going to go faster. But that's really what those roads were made for, is to get those, get people from one end to the other of our city. So it hasn't come to us yet, but I just want you guys to know we are doing what we can to make sure that the city is safe. It will be on the top of my head too as well, because as my kids get older, whatever decisions I make now, whether I'm here later on or not on council, it's, those decisions I'm making now are going to affect my kids. So believe me, whatever I'm deciding up here now is going to affect that. I have your kids, your future kids, your grandkids, their safety in mind as well. So just know that we are trying our hardest. We will do our best to protect Encinitas and your families.
Councilmember O'Hara.
You dive into a challenging night, right? And you come up here working on a work plan, and a lot happens. And a lot of important and strong emotional things come through the microphone, through the podium, with everybody up here. I don't want to dive into any specific comments, but I want to dive into what the dangers on our street that we are addressing are the result of bad design and a lot of the things you see us changing and moving forward to change. And those designs need to be addressed. I want to caution staff to know that when you say things without a back study, without the report, without the information, you frighten people. So have to be really careful about it. Be aware of what you say. We heard it when somebody came up here upset about something you said that was unbacked. We're going to dive into that subject, and it's a subject to have, but we can't just throw things out there. It matters to people. Safety is top priority, whether it's public safety through our Sheriff's Department, or through our Fire Department, or the safety of everybody on the roads. Staff needs to be highly aware of that. Devastated me to hear somebody make a comment about, that was unbacked, that made them frightened about something that we are going to be looking at coming up. I want to talk about Vision Zero, and I want to remind everybody to not get caught up in the spin of politics versus safety. Vision Zero has set up, has failed in a lot of places, in funding and enforcement, failure of consistency between cities. It fails because it looks at one way to do things. I think the concept of Vision Zero is what every councilperson, every legislator, every person across the world, specifically in the United States, should be looking at that goal. But be careful of the politics, because those are going on in this room. The politics versus the application and what the goal is. We want to make sure that we are going after the goal, not the politics. I don't want to dive into that because I'm going to move on. I think we've been talking about sequencing lights for a long time, and it's something we've mentioned, and I think you've heard me up here say that, the importance of it. I'd love to see, I'd love to see that more. One of the reasons people speed is because they don't know how long it's going to take them, and they're rushing to get that light because they don't know what the next light's going to be like and how long they're going to be stopped there. And we need to make it so people can say, "It's going to take me eight minutes to get from here to there. It's going to take me six minutes. It's going to take me 25 minutes." But they know so they can plan, and that's what sequencing of lights does. And it doesn't matter if you have two lanes, three lanes, five lanes. People know they go the speed limit. That's one way to change the behavior that is effective. You can go to Portland if you want to see it work really, really well, as well as Seattle. So I 100% believe it was Deputy Mayor Lyons and the mayor who mentioned sequencing of lights. I absolutely think we need to do that. As far as infrastructure developments goes, this is not a surprise. It shouldn't be a surprise to anybody, unfortunately. I think we showed in fighting Quill Meadows that the state doesn't care about our traffic. In fact, they told us to build even though we told them it wasn't safe. We sat here, right here, proved that the traffic study for Quill Meadows was wrong. I won't go into the details of city staff not making the adjustment that one of our residents did to show that it was wrong. But that happened, and it's because the state mandate is unbacked. The way we changed that is at the election booth in 2026. A lot of stuff I didn't expect to talk about tonight, so I apologize for being a little off-topic. I believe it's, I also support SB 645. That's a staff direction, though. That's not a direction of the work plan for this, as I mentioned, is it correct? That would be a direction of staff, not a direction of the Mobility Commission?
No, it could be, I'd like it to go to, and I assume you would too, just send it to the Traffic Commission to consider and make recommendations to us based on, should we enter into the pilot program? And if so, what parameters around it? Start it there, have it come to us.
I love it. I'm just looking for clarification. Somebody want to add to this? Well, let me go through the list real quick. Item number one, I'm really pleased that staff worked really hard on El Portal to start directing this. And I assume on this item, we're really passing it back to them to assess how effective we are in this one setup. Because as, when we looked at El Portal two weeks ago, that was what we were told, that we are looking to study this as a universal, across-the-city pattern of signage, right? Correct?
That was our recommendation. It came to you guys after the work plan was developed by MTSC, so things are just a little out of order.
Great. So we'd be sending this back to them to effectively study that, see how effective it is in its application and whether we want to make changes to that or changes going forward, or different signage or patterns at other intersections or other roundabouts. So I support that in that regard. Santa Fe revisions, I'm not, I feel like staff has got that. That's going to come back to us already, right? Yeah, that's going to be a council issue, so I would remove number two. Circulation element, element mobility review by schools is something we're constantly working on. In fact, we've got some ideas coming out that we're looking forward to help differentiate, to Councilmember Schaefer's point, the importance of creating fewer interactions between vehicles, bicycles, and pedestrians. And one of the ways we do that is, and we've been fervently doing that and discussing, is through dress net. So I'd love to see that keep going forward. Birmingham Drive pedestrian mobility is well-needed. On item number five, the, we're talking about adding automation, right? And I think we're all kind of on ingredients that that should be something we look at, any way we can improve safety. And I would, I would say, you know, let's look to expand it. What are the options? Not just what options are out there, but what options are not on the table yet that we can come up with. Vulcan Trail Safe Route is something that we are looking forward to pushing through. I know we applied for that grant. I would like to see number seven expanded beyond Village Park. I'd kind of like them to address all the neighborhoods that they can, wherever we identify it being a community neighborhood. I think that would be a good way to go. And then Santa Fe and Crest, my question on that was, that'll be included in the Santa Fe East segment when we do that, correct? So I would remove that to kind of streamline this program. And I want to add on, I would really love, and I think this, I think there's the staff, the commissioners on the commission to do a great job in this. I would love to see this commission explore e-bike safety legislation that we can bring to our assembly member and actually ask her to add, and she's trying to get some motions pushed through, and we need to help her. So if you can come up with an e-bike safety measure, legislation idea, that we can push forward to her, she'll address some of these things. She wants to address the speed limits of e-bikes and getting, making sure kids don't get on motorcycles, but they get on e-bikes. She wants to look at challenges of, we can't actually license them because people go from town to town, and we don't have the jurisdiction to do that. But we can look at ways to make kids safer if they're bringing their bike to school. And she wants to look at all of these items. And so we have the ability here, and clearly we have a community that is 100% willing to step in and even help the commission, it sounds like, if we needed to do public meeting on this, to come up with some legislation that she can put forward to the whole state of California, and we can not only make Encinitas better, but the entire state. So I would love to see somebody help me back me on that to get that on the work plan. I think that would be a dynamite thing to do for this work plan. I apologize for taking so long, and I yield the floor.
Okay. And so now I think I'd like to see if anybody on the Traffic Commission, starting with the chair, would like to make a comment, questions?
Yes, so I appreciate all the comments, particularly including ground or Vision Zero and that pilot program. I think that sounds very promising as well. But yeah, appreciate all the feedback. Thank you.
Okay. And commissioners, I can go down the line, or do anybody want to speak? Or do you not want to speak, starting with Glenn?
I'd just like to comment that since we've lowered the speed limits, I take care to drive at or below the posted speed limit, even if I'm leading a parade. And I'd like to encourage everyone in the room, everyone listening to this, everyone watching the video or whatever, to do the same thing. Because it could start here with all of us observing the posted speed limits, and the idea would catch on in the rest of the city.
I agree. Paul, any comments?
Actually, not too much. I think I agree with most of the sentiments expressed today. But I do want to sort of reinforce, maybe I should say, as somebody who grew up in San Diego, I remember a time when going up to LA was a real surprise because everybody drove so frickin' fast up there. And even on the freeways in San Diego, we were all driving at 60 miles an hour or so. And you go up to LA and people are going 80. And it was a huge difference going up to Los Angeles as a driver. I would say in the last 15 or 20 years, that's not the case anymore. In fact, people seem to drive as fast down here as they do up in LA, and they're doing the same kind of wacky things that you used to shake your head when you saw them doing in Los Angeles. And there's probably a lot of reasons for that. But one is congestion. San Diego is a lot more congested than it used to be. And driver behavior is not nearly as polite as it used to be. And, you know, I too have witnessed people going through on yellows or reds at turns, and it's especially frustrating. And enforcement is certainly one of the solutions that I agree we need to explore. But I think we also need to be understanding that congestion drives people to do, to have bad behaviors as drivers. And as we get more congestion in Encinitas, we can expect that there's going to be more people trying to do these bad behaviors. One way to correct that is through enforcement. But I think we also need to be aware of whatever we can do to address congestion and reduce it, especially on those thoroughfares. People are in a hurry, getting to work in the morning or whatever they're doing. And slowing them down may not, may create unintended consequences. And I'm, you know, I think you've already heard stories, I know we have at the commission, of people doing things out of frustration on Santa Fe because traffic's not moving the way they want it to. There's no excuse for people to break the law. But I think if we create a city that has more congestion, we can expect that more people are going to do it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. I'd just like to first echo what Councilman Schaefer mentioned about the fact that Encinitas has infrastructure that was originally built for a small town, 20,000 people, a long time ago. And now we're facing a situation that is different, and it's going to get worse in terms of the amount of vehicles going through this town in the future thanks to all the new housing that's being built. I came to San Diego County, I'm a lifelong California resident, except for 10 years abroad, in 1980 to start my anesthesia residency down in town, San Diego, with UCSD. I used to be able to take my bike to a staff member at 6:00 in the morning in Del Mar. I used to be able to take my bike to a staff member at 6:00 in the morning in Del Mar, we'd get in his car and be at Hillcrest in 15 minutes. There were zero cars on the freeway, I mean, nothing. And this guy had a Porsche, so we went pretty quick, but there wasn't anything in the way. Well, nobody does that today. Nobody even gets close to that. So everything's changing and so we're, we're put in a situation, the people in this room, with having to deal with that. And there's some really terrible things that happened recently in the town and that's very emotional, but if we deal with it only on an emotional basis, we won't get anywhere. We really need to be able to come up with good solutions or we're just going to face more of those. And I agree with the mayor that it comes down to driver behavior, but I also agree with Councilman Schaefer, we can't change everybody's behavior. What we can do is change infrastructure for the better. One of the reasons that I joined the commission was because there was infrastructure put in by the very same people that are the biggest champions of something called Vision Zero. I have a vision of very low, I don't think Vision Zero is possible. I don't mind saying that. I just don't think you'll reach it. When I heard about Vision Zero, I didn't even know what it was. I looked into it and actually read, so what is Vision Zero? Well, it started in Sweden. Well, I know a little bit about Sweden, everybody in my family, except for me as a citizen of that country and I lived there for 10 years. And they started Vision Zero for political reasons. It really, and part of it was lowering speed limits to levels that were extremely low, way lower than Abe is talking about and Sacramento is talking about here in Encinitas. It didn't work out. And so when they initially had it, I think that their, Vision Zero is actually the definition, is we're going to get to Vision Zero by infrastructure, by engineering that eliminates deaths in traffic. Well, I think that's a great idea, except what did we see on South Beach 101? We had infrastructure put in by the very same people that put in Vision Zero and we ended up with one crash, bicycle crash per month, .92, we'll round it off to one, for the last 57 months. So I came here with the anticipation of dealing with the work plan, so I do have a couple of suggestions, I'm sorry for the digression. I would like to add to the work plan, in the first place, the work plan doesn't really reflect what we're doing because the four HSIP improvement grants that Abe came with, that's a massive work plan right there, so we've been dealing with that a lot. But I would still like to add that we look into finding alternative routes for pedestrians, for cyclists, from the major arteries in the east-west direction. We can do that, we can map those out, we can put bike routes, signs up, we can advertise it, we can have maps, so that would be one thing. And at the same time, when we finally get to a decent design on Santa Fe, we'll get all those cars that are going down Melba right now and making that a very dangerous place back where they ought to be, which is Santa Fe Drive. The other thing that I would like to add is, Elena Thompson wrote a letter.
Ron, if you could speak into the microphone, it'd be very helpful. Speak into the microphone.
Okay. I saw Elena Thompson wrote a, I just wanted to address it to the people that needed here, but obviously the microphone will get it over there. Addressing the pedestrian path on La Costa that has never been put into place, really, that land on the south side is city-owned, I know that there's a grant pending and Abe maybe can give us some information on that eventually, but I'd like to add that to the work plan. There's been petitions with over 50 residents that have signed it. It's important, somehow it fell off, that's it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Nothing?
Oh, good.
Okay, so I can try and summarize or does somebody want to make a motion? I can do, I can do what I think I heard and form it, do it in the form of a motion. So to, first of all, remove number two is what Jim said, I agree. I think that's in our purview and we're going to address it here. And number nine is virtually the same thing, right? And it'll come out that, so, so I think we can take two and nine off, but the ones to add, add anything, and when, when I'm referring to Vision Zero and in the spirit of this work plan, Vision Zero is the strategic goal of getting to zero functional deaths due to the transportation system and that is both pedestrian, bicycle, and vehicle, and I'll even throw equestrian in there. So, yeah, not, not, nothing political, just strictly the Vision Zero, zero deaths in transportation. So that-
So can we change that before we go on? Can we, instead of saying Vision Zero, then say just what you said?
I'm happy with that.
Okay.
Are you okay with that? Just using, using the functional definition rather than-
Functional definition is fine and the city still is aiming towards the zero deaths on our, in our roadways.
And we previously adopted Vision Zero, just to be clear, the council, the previous council did, so it's still an adopted resolution within the city to work towards that. So if we want to modify that, we'll have to, maybe a future, agendize it and talk about it and figure out how to de-politicize if that's-
I think the way he's saying is, we're not following their ways of doing it, we're going to do it the way that Encinitas needs to do it because Encinitas is different than Sweden and San Francisco and all these other places, we're going to do it our way and not per their political requirements.
Fair enough, yeah. Number two was to have the commission investigate SB 645 pilot program and what you would recommend that we apply for. And that would be the speed, cameras potentially, that type of, it's a pilot program, a couple of cities have taken advantage of it and make a recommendation, should we apply, if so, what parameters would you like to see in it? Traffic signal timing was one, but I think that's already, that has not been forgotten, that is, you know, it, it's a major upgrade to the equipment which is happening and it's got a grant and everything, so it's a project within staff, so.
I'd like to ask the city manager for some clarification then, because it's my understanding there may be one or two intersections that are being looked at, but it is not comprehensive across the city.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Lines. We have, and I can also have Director Bangston talk about it too, but we've talked about signal timing and we talked about possibly a pilot along Encinitas Boulevard. That cost was about half a million dollars. So those are lead pedestrian intervals, those help people with the crossings, some of the, with the signal timing helps with a little bit more of traffic flow and things like that, but I can have Director Bangston, because I know she came up with that for me.
Yeah, so there are some, some tweaks we can make with our new controllers that we have, they're a little bit more intelligent than our old controllers, but the coordinated signal timing across our signals and the Caltrans signals, that's kind of a bigger effort. And then adjusting signal timing seems like a really easy thing, but what you actually need to do is go out there and count cars and how many people are turning left and how many people are turning right and what does it look like at this time of day and what does it look like at that time of the day? And then somebody needs to design a signal timing plan with how many seconds go to each phase and how many PEDs we expect. So it's easy to say like, adjust the signal timing, but it takes, you have to do a traffic study and then you have to do a new design for the signal timing plan and then implement that plan and that costs money. So we are looking to make the small tweaks we can with our new controllers, but a really big kind of comprehensive effort that loops in Caltrans, we've initiated the conversation with Caltrans to see if they'd be, they'd participate with us and we've got some, it sounds promising, so we're, we're exploring what that would look like and then once, if Caltrans seems like they're on board, then we'd bring in action to council.
Okay, and so I misunderstood that the $1.2 million grant for the LPI, that is citywide and that resulted in many of the controllers being upgraded to more modern ones. This sounds like it, it's an additional timing that is Caltrans coordinated with our system, which has historically always been a little bit of a black hole trying to figure that one out. And I know we are always going back to Caltrans, trying to convince them to fix, not change their timing yet again and screw up our timing, so.
Can I ask, how do we get out of sequencing? I mean, to me, it's, it's all a mathematic equation, we're not reinventing the wheel. It's how many cars, how fast are they going, what's the distance they travel and how do we keep them moving?
What he's talking about, or what the, sorry.
No, I understand the, but we're talking about sequencing the lights.
We're talking about coordinating the network of lights so that traffic flow is continuous in certain directions at certain times of day to maximize the throughput at a given rate, at a given lower speed.
Anyway, I think there's-
I hear us overthinking it.
There's a lot of dialogue here, which tells me that maybe this should be on the, on the work plan, because I think the public might have some input and I don't know that we can solve it right here.
I agree.
And since we're here, can we get this on an agenda to get a comprehensive traffic study for the entire city? We just did it for, we just did it for Public Works, we've just done it since, sorry, Director Bangston just said this, we basically need a, we need to actually put money aside and make sure that we get a, a traffic study for the whole city, especially for all the developments coming in town, that we have something to back it up against VMT, not just-
But let's agendize that ourselves.
I know, I'm just saying, since we're here.
What I was trying to clarify, I was trying to clarify for the third work plan item was traffic signal timing, specifically coordination of Caltrans and city of Encinitas. And I think that's what we want studied by the Traffic Commission. Ultimately, it's going to be staff and your bandwidth doing that, but your input to tell, to feedback on what you think and what they're doing, okay? Is that, do I see consensus there?
Yeah, I think there's an opportunity for the public engagement through the commission, I think that'd be great, thank you.
Okay, and then-
I, I don't think it accomplishes the goal, which is to get people the ability to move through the city and know where they can go and what time and-
It's just one thing, it's one of many things.
I get it, but I don't hear a goal at the end of it to get people from at least another, to identify the roads you're going to do that on.
I think what I'm suggesting is that we, the council, take up the bigger picture item of whether it's a full, comprehensive plan and then drive that down through Traffic Department.
I'm in favor of that, yes.
But giving them something to go do, they, it's still, it's, we took two off, but there's still, we put several on.
I'm good, I appreciate the explanation, thank you.
Implement, number one, just to make sure that it is citywide, consistent signage at roundabouts, and I would add somewhat consistent with neighboring cities too, so that people driving Carlsbad to Encinitas don't have to think different ways every time, but at a minimum, getting ours consistent, I think that clarifies number one. We already talked about removing number two and then supporting or pushing for statewide legislation because we don't control the vehicle code and we don't have the ability or purview to regulate riders at all, but we can make recommendations to our senator or to our assembly person and they can take up legislation. So we would love to hear what your recommendation is and then we can pass that on accordingly. And then we had remove number nine and those, those are the changes that I had.
Did you include the traffic, traffic cameras, enforcement cameras?
Isn't that, is that SB 645?
Oh, good, thank you.
And then I wanted to add Ron's requirement for the east-west and helping out with the east-west separation, bike separate lanes or transportation route.
And is that a modification to one that's already on here? That, I think it's a good clarification, but I, I was trying to figure out, I thought there was one in here about, and it goes back to your idea of having more off main thoroughfare for bicycles and pedestrians. In other words, we, the bikes, the separation of bicyclists and pedestrians from traffic would be also getting the bicycles on smaller side streets.
It's being expansion of number three, but it, it needs to be more robust and not just to that specific, but kind of, yeah, I guess.
So, so what I would recommend is we augment number three with investigating alternate bike routes.
All the way to the beach.
That, east-west in particular, focus east-west to better separate vehicles and main thoroughfares and bicyclists.
That's true, yeah.
Okay, modify number three. Okay, so.
Second.
Are you, are you ready?
I don't think so, but I will tell you what I have, what I came up with.
Yeah.
So you're approving the work plan, amended to remove items two and nine, got that one. Two was to add consideration of SB 645 pilot program and make recommendations to the city council.
Yep.
Three was to, I'm not clear on that one, so I'm going to go to four, which was add review of signal timing and synchronization process, Caltrans city.
I think that was three.
I have them kind of numbered.
Okay, you're numbering differently.
And then I have, let's see, add explore and make recommendations for safety legislation. And then the one I wasn't clear on was adding functional definition, it was when you were talking about Vision Zero.
So to have the Traffic Commission make recommendations on using the classic definition of Vision Zero, in other words, we're not going to bind ourselves to how Vision Zero defines it, but it's basically eliminating or minimizing traffic deaths due to our transportation system, be it vehicle, pedestrian, or bicycle.
Okay, and then, is that right? So I have one, two, I had a total of five additions, or five changes.
So you had the, number one was Vision Zero and number two was SB 645.
Okay.
What was number three? You skipped that one. Was that the consistent signage at roundabouts throughout the city?
That one is number, that's number one, and that one already said citywide.
We wanted to have neighboring cities to that.
Yeah.
Citywide and neighboring cities, under the project.
And if possible with neighboring cities, I'm, I'm just, so we don't have to retrain drivers coming into our cities, but we own what we own.
And then number three, you're adding, you're expanding that to, with the addition of exploring alternative bike routes east-west.
Okay.
And that was amending number three.
And then you had to remove two and remove nine.
Remove two and number nine.
Okay.
Second.
And do we need it read back?
No.
Okay. With that, we will vote.
That motion carries unanimously.
How do we want to handle, just go straight to the housing element? Yes. I'd say just go to the housing.
Okay, so this meeting is adjourned and we're going to go right into the Housing Authority and try and crack that out quickly, so if you're not staying, leave quietly and we will go right back to business.
Stay like a couple minutes.
Yeah, we just have to log in, so we got like a two minute, but if you can take your discussions outside as quickly as possible, that will help us. And thank you for sticking around.
Eric, are you there?
Yeah.
You went to two.
Yeah, we were out walking right out.
Yeah.
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 That's right. We're gonna, we're gonna get-
Three. Okay.
After this, yeah. Just a little one. If we could, oh, let me find mine. There we go. Okay. If we could come to order. This is a meeting of the Encinitas Housing Authority, and the first step is to call order, or call, call the meeting to order, and next is roll call.
So we called it to order. Commissioner San Antonio?
Present.
Commissioner Schaefer?
Here.
Commissioner O'Hara is absent, but he should be coming back in a moment. Vice Chair Lines?
Here.
Chair Ayers?
Here.
Tenet Commissioner Muller?
Here.
And Tenet Commissioner Williams?
Here.
Great.
And please note that Housing Committee, Housing Authority members receive an independent stipend of $50 for convening Housing Authority meetings pursuant to Housing Authority Resolution 94-04.
If you could pull the mic over closer.
Oh, yeah, there you go.
Because there's a little, we have some background noise from the lobby. So tonight, we have two agenda items. The first one is approval of the minutes from March 12th, 2025, and I don't know that we need a staff report on that. I believe we've all read them, so, good.
Move to approve.
Okay, I got a motion to approve.
Second.
And I got a second. And with that, we will call the question. I assume we have to do a roll call vote.
Yes. Commissioner San Antonio?
Aye.
Commissioner Schaefer?
Aye.
Commissioner O'Hara is absent. Chair Lines?
Yes.
Chair Ayers?
Yes.
Tenet Commissioner Muller?
Yes.
And Tenet Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously with Commissioner O'Hara absent.
Okay, moving on to item H2, which is a public hearing to consider amendments to the Encinitas Housing Authority Administrative Plan, and the contact person is Program Coordinator Fotinos.
Yep. Thank you. Good evening, Chair Ayers, Vice Chair Lines, and Board Commissioners. My name is Nikki Fotinos, and I'm the Program Coordinator for the Housing Choice Voucher Program. Okay, so I have to, oh, thank you. All right. The Encinitas Housing Authority, EHA, receives annual funding from the Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD, to administer the Housing Choice Voucher, HCV, program. The HCV program provides rental assistance to very low-income families whose income is less than 50% of the area median income. The EHA was established in 1994 and has received HCV program funds from HUD each year. We found a minor error in one sentence in the staff report, and we're correcting it here. On page two, in the background section in the staff report, in the first paragraph, the sentence should read as follows on the screen. Families who qualify for assistance pay approximately 30% of their monthly income towards the rent, and the EHA pays the difference to the landlord. So I just wanted to make that little correction there. All right. Public housing agencies must adopt a written administrative plan in accordance with HUD requirements. The administrative plan discusses items such as how applicants are selected, rent calculations, and waiting list procedures. We are updating the administrative plan to reflect Housing Opportunity through Modernization Act, HATMA, changes. HATMA regulations address asset limitations, allowances and deductions, and income calculations. HATMA is intended to streamline processes and reduce administrative burdens on public housing agencies and program participants. The changes are to be effective July 1st. Thank you. Currently, there is no asset limitation for the HCV program. HUD has established an asset limit of $100,000 for new families being admitted to the program. In addition, HUD has updated the list of asset exclusions to exclude such assets as IRAs, 401Ks, and education savings accounts. Under current regulations, elderly and disabled families receive a deduction for medical expenses that exceed 3% of their annual income. HUD is increasing this threshold to 10%. So families will receive a deduction for medical expenses that exceed 10% of their annual income. The changes will be phased in over a 24-month period. Currently, families on the HCV program receive a deduction for childcare expenses for children under 13 years of age if childcare enables an adult to work, attend school full-time, or actively seek employment. If the childcare deduction is ending, the family may request a hardship exemption for a period of 90 days. HUD is implementing new inspection standards called National Standards for the Physical Inspection of Real Estate, INSPIRE. INSPIRE is a new inspection standard developed by HUD to replace the Housing Quality Standards, INSPIRE emphasizes health and safety-related defects over minor cosmetic issues. Of the 110 households on the voucher program, 70% of households are elderly or disabled on fixed incomes, and 30% are families. The program helps to keep them housed and not enter homelessness. The reason this percentage adds up to over 100% is because some of the elderly and disabled are also veterans or were homeless when they were admitted to the program. Staff recommends that the Housing Authority Board adopt Resolution Number 2025-01 titled "A Resolution of the City of Encinitas Housing Authority Board of Commissioners Adopting Amendments to the Housing Choice Voucher Program Administrative Plan." And staff are available for any questions.
Okay. Any questions of clarification? No? Appreciate it. Do we have public speakers?
We do not.
We do not have public speakers, okay? In that case, we'll-
We'll say, open the public hearing, close the public hearing.
Oh. Open the public hearing, no public speakers, close the public hearing. That was easy. So with that, I don't have any speakers right now?
I'll, I'll go ahead and make a comment and then make a motion, but I just wanted to compliment staff and, and all the leadership around this, that we continue to manage this program well, we continue to get more funding, we continue to be, create less, fewer barriers for people, so I'm pleased, and I'll move approval of the recommended action.
Okay.
Second.
And I was going to hop, yeah. And thank you, yeah, I actually appreciated the, the detail in this administrative plan on how, it answered a lot of questions that I've been wondering over the years, so I appreciate the opportunity to review it. I had never had the opportunity before, so I'll second the motion too, just to keep it moving, and-
Oh, I have Schaefer.
Oh. Oh, I'm sorry, that's fine then. Council, Commissioner O'Hara.
Yeah, I'm, I also want to commend staff for great job in this report. The detail was fantastic, and your explanation of it, both today and, and our briefing was so incredibly helpful and concise. I think one of the things that we want to talk about at a future date is, the other side of this is keeping these people in their homes, and the side of the, that the landlord plays in it, and so I hope we continue forward this conversation, and I love that we have this jumping point for it.
After, after, I'll recognize it, because you don't have a button to push, they all have buttons to push, so if you want to speak, well, I'll recognize you next. Go, go ahead. Were you done? San Antonio?
I just want to say, thank you again. This is a, it's a great report. Now I have, just my personal story, it's like I, I've obviously have, I've said it before, I've had a, a person that worked for me, he's, you know, trying to get into this program as well. It's exciting for me to be a part of this, and then to also, now I've had, somebody came to the shop today that knows I'm a council member, was asking about this program, how to get, be a part of it, so now it's, it's kind of, it's, it's nice for me to be up here and to be able to, now I have some background, I know a lot about it now, and I'm able to actually help, and firsthand, so it's, it's, it's a good feeling, and I appreciate all the work you guys do to put this together. It is very helpful, and I'm, I'm excited of what you guys have put together for the city. Thank you.
Thank you.
You had your button pressed.
I mean, everybody's saying it, just for time, but thank you very much, and there were some questions I had prior to yesterday's briefing, the brief took care of them, and I really appreciate it, so, thank you all.
I'll be real quick, I just want to thank the city and Nikki and our team for excellent presentation, for making, for making us in compliance with the federal government, and for providing so much happiness and joy and safety for the people to get to participate in the program. And an extra thank you to the city of Encinitas and all of you. We had a fire like a little over two weeks ago, and I might not be sitting here and might not have a home if it wasn't for the awesome fire department, the sheriffs, and our infrastructure. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Very good.
None words.
Any-
Oh, I'm good, I'm big, so I really appreciate everything, the presentation was great, and it's all great.
Thank you. Okay, with that-
And then, just before we vote, just as matters of housekeeping, if we can just go through and make sure if anyone has any disclosures of anything that they received, information that is not included in the packet.
But, and that includes all of us, right? Yeah.
Nothing to disclose.
Nothing to disclose.
Nothing to disclose.
Nothing to disclose.
And I have nothing to disclose?
Nothing to disclose.
Nothing to disclose.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
And with that, we have a motion and a second. Call a question? I guess you have to do a roll, roll call anyways.
Commissioner San Antonio?
Aye.
Commissioner Schaefer?
Aye.
Commissioner O'Hara?
Aye.
Vice Chair Lines?
Yes.
Chair Ayers?
Aye.
Tenet Commissioner Muller?
Yes.
And Tenet Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Very good. And with that, we are now adjourned, and we will move on in seven minutes at 6:30 to our next meeting.